It doesn't matter. What matters?
This is.
I haven't attempted to review it. I'm not, I'm not reviewing it. Just standing. Which map is it right?
It says four four contribution, but I don't want.
You know, there's four people that are funded out of the. Four people that are funded out of the criminal justice.
So it's not four neutral.
No.
The same.
Four say because it just, he just think that was part of it, so.
Okay, okay.
All right, we're going to call over to the Glades County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, March eleventh at nine a.m. We'll have the prayer by Commissioner Taylor and the pledge by Commissioner Patterson and our buddy Pete Robinson.
Lord, we thank you for giving us a new day, Lord. Thank you for the freedom and the opportunity to gather here today. Lord, I pray that you would lead and guide us as we go through this commission meeting, Lord, that you be with each one here and their families represented. Thank you for bringing Commissioner Stanley safe and we pray for Commissioner Sapp, uh, wherever he is, that you be with him. And we just, uh, thank you for this day again and everyone here and just be with us, lead us and guide us in Jesus and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the general republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody here this morning. A pretty short agenda, it looks like, uh. Has anybody heard from Mr. Sapp?
I've not.
So. The record, Mr. Sapp is absent until he shows up or hopefully he is safe. Um. Amendments to the agenda?
So yes, sir, I've just received this from the Sheriff's Department of Criminal Justice grant, we could add that to the end of the agenda.
I can get a motion to, I've been in the agenda to, uh, give a criminal justice grant.
So move.
Same.
Got a motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Taylor. To add the criminal justice grant as number ten on our business agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero. All right, public input on non-adjourned items, anyone wishing to provide public comments, please blow a comment card on the table at the entrance to commission chambers. Please note, all comments on non-adjourned items are limited to three minutes and/or the board's discretion. Do we have any public comments? None? Anybody that's not signed up for public comments wants to speak? We have a presentations and awards. A public hearing, number one, extend the suspension of road impact fees.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, these are public hearings, we need to open a public hearing, for each one of these. Part of our process, we have to maintain if, if we do decide to do it, uh, impact fees in the future, if you're doing a study now with the Central Florida Republican Senate Council. But each one of these will have to be treated as a separate hearing. We don't need to call the public into, under reach one of them, please.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioner Susan Bouchon's from the record. First item of public hearing, the standard is to extend the suspension of road impact fees. And a brief summary has been provided to by county staff. I would like to just, for the record, um, put in the number of different years of ordinances that you have where you have suspended the impact fees. So Glades County had previously adopted road impact fees with ordinance number two thousand six dash eight and ordinance number two thousand eight dash thirty-one. And due to the economic downturn, the impact fees were temporarily suspended on all of these following dates that I will be providing you. November twenty-fourth, two thousand eight, November twenty-third, two thousand nine, December fourteen, two thousand ten, January eighth, two thousand thirteen. And the reason for the year's difference there is that ordinance suspended it for three years. Most of them were one year, but some were two years or three years. And again, on November twenty-third, two thousand nine, December fourteen, two thousand ten, January eighth, two thousand thirteen, February eleven, two thousand fourteen, January twelve, two thousand sixteen, February fourteen, two thousand seventeen, February thirteen, two thousand eighteen, March twelve, two thousand nineteen, March tenth, twenty twenty, March ninth, twenty twenty-one, March eighth, twenty twenty-two, March fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and March twelve, twenty twenty-four. And the, the most recent ordinance that you passed, they had the fee suspension expire upon March fourteen, twenty twenty-five. And this ordinance will take effect upon your adoption. And just so that you can understand the impact of not having impact fees to your budget, had they been collected just for this last fiscal year from January first, twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, um, the road impact fee would have been two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-four, four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Had all of your impacts fee been connected for all of the ordinances that are in front of you today, the total amount for that same year period would have been one million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and thirty-five cents. I've provided you with a motion for your consideration. I did have it as, as one of your attachments that showed how, where we calculated the proposed impact fees for this period I had mentioned to you, January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And it's based upon the ordinance that you adopted and the number of permits that were provided, single family, there were seventy-three, mobile homes, number thirty-eight.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Bouchon's, where were most of these permits located at? If you had to say the general area of the county, would you have a?
I'd have to get the research set for you.
Okay, no, I was just wondering because an impact fee can only be used where they're, where they may have collected at, so I was just wondering where it was.
So, um, do we know where we are in this study as far as when it's going to be done?
Yes, we have deliverable that will be coming here soon from central Florida and the county is, um, it has to be finished by May of twenty twenty-five, so in a couple months.
So the motion, I know. Could be to suspend them up till. Any date.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that, I think. I believe I know where you're going. If you look at section five of the ordinance, it discusses the suspension of the collection of road impact fees. And it says that it will be suspended temporarily, uh, temporarily until March thirteen, twenty twenty-six, that's subsection A. And then subsection B says that Glades County reserves the ability to rescind the temporary suspension of the collection of road impact fees at any time in the future. When the Board of Glades County, when the Glades County Board of County Commissioners determines in its sole discretion that the temporary suspension is no longer appropriate. So at any point in time between now and March thirteen, twenty twenty-six, the Board of County Commissioners can determine to terminate or rescind the temporary suspension. Yes, by ordinance. Your ordinance by ordinance, you would have to rescind this by ordinance as well.
So Chair, if I may, I want to make sure, I don't believe I said temporary suspension of impact fees, and I'd like to have that in the current record, that it is temporary suspension.
So I know we're doing this study and there's probably a good chance that we may be looking at this very soon, so, um, I'm good with that.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and when you, if you do decide to implement them, Mr. Patterson's correct, you have to spend them in the area where they've collected, but you can also designate areas within a region where you can take funds from that region. It may not be on that particular street, but it be in that region. And you can do it, uh, you can set regions up throughout the county so that the funds aren't specific to that roadway, but it may have impact a little further out, it may need additional capacity. These funds can't be used for maintenance, they're used for capacity and expansion of road.
And basically, we have to suspend them right now because we don't have a study and we don't have a court, this has to do, so.
Yes, we have a study, the study's ordered.
Oh, yeah, right, we need an update, which we're working on now.
And so when you receive the new study, then you can consider your options and whether you want to, uh, have a, an impact fee ordinance. And at that time, we may want to restructure the impact fee ordinance you currently have, uh, and make conditional changes to it. So, so that's, that's what you do. And that would also be an opportunity in. My recollection is that we had two large areas. I'm thinking of the wrong ordinance, but that the county was divided into two large areas for impact fees, I'm not sure about that, it's been a long time since I've looked at ordinance. Because we've just continued to, uh, renewed the suspension. But I think we have some pretty large areas, regions that I was speaking of. Uh, if my recollection is correct, it was a west area, then east area, maybe of the county, uh, so, so you have some flexibility. But when you adopt the ordinance that, after you see the study, if you adopted your impact fee ordinance at that point, I believe we could make further adjustments to that language if it is appropriate. And the study will help us understand that as well.
Well, a lot of people misunderstand what impact fees are for and what they should be used for, but I was probably, I said, they can't be used for maintenance or anything else. Then you have people say, well, you need to reenact them because we need help over here, well, there's nothing to be able to do over here, it's all over here, so we can't use that anyway, even if it wasn't that. So.
Impact fees are intended to be used to address the impact of new development on your infrastructure.
Yes.
If you, if new development is causing additional traffic and you need to build new roads, then that's what the impact fees are for, to address that additional impact. Uh, not to make repairs, not to do maintenance, not to do work on existing roads.
Correct.
Expanding capacity as well, impact fees are being used for.
Okay, um, I'll open up the public comment. Any public comment? Any none?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve adoption of an ordinance that the Board of County Commissioners of Glades County, Florida, to extend the suspension of the collection of road impact fees for a time certain, providing for scrimmer's errors, providing for conflict, providing for liberal construction, providing for separability, providing an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. And we, Mr. Chair, this read the ordinance, we need a motion, so we'll have to do that. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Myself is yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp is absent. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Passes four zero. We'll move on to number two, extended suspension of parking impact fees, which is going to be the same thing, just.
Yes, sir. Just for clarification, each one of these ordinances are adopted by their own ordinance numbers, or ordinance and ordinance numbers. So just for the record, the one for park impact fees was ordinance number two thousand six dash ten and ordinance number two thousand eight dash thirty-three. All of the other dates that the impact fees were temporarily suspended were the same as I had read into the record for the previous public hearing. For your information, the impact fees that would have been collected under this ordinance between January first, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for parks, would have been forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. And again, collectively for all of these four ordinances, have they been in place for that same period of time? It would have been one million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay, um, any public comment? Yes, sir.
I missed it, I forget by name.
Yeah. Big name and address?
Gary Blake, two thousand and one, Avenue, County Way. I just had a question, uh, for those impact fees, would it be possible that they could have been put in like an escrow account somewhere at some later date, when we saw appropriate? Cause those areas aren't going, to have money, funds available to use then versus, are you, I mean, is there a time period that you have to use those impact fees?
There is, there are time frames for certain, certain admin, and I don't know, because ordinance were passed, uh, long before I was here, and I don't know Mr. Preng was, but typically parks. Impact fees for parks are regional parks and local parks are typically the way they're set up. So if a particular neighborhood was collecting impact fees, then the park improvement would go in that neighborhood. But then you would have, uh, regional parks where it's a more global type park where like Soul Ramp, I don't know where the park, or something like that could use funds from the entire impact fee. So it, it's a little bit different than road impact fees, cause you could divide it up into regional parks, the funds in the regional parks and local parks.
Okay, but I guess I was asking, the fees that collected, cause generally when you do a road project, it takes a while to get the plan in and all that other stuff. But if you start collecting the money then for stuff you need later, it's too late. What I was asking is, the funds that would have been collected, but could they have been put in the escrow account so that at the point that, or some account, that so at the point that you needed, the funds would be there versus saying, oh, you needed, let's start collecting. See like that's, in other words, this is a way to accumulate those funds and have them available for us at the time that you need them.
The answer is, yes, sir, if I might, the answer is yes, sir, you can accumulate them, there's a time period, I think it's five years, maybe seven years, that you can accumulate impact fees. And then if you have not used them by that time, then there's a requirement that you reimburse them, pay them back. So yes, sir, there's a use it or lose it timeframe, it's a five to seven year window, however, so you can accumulate it for a while.
Okay. And I guess from my thinking, if we had those funds available to use, and we have that timeframe to use it, then we can plan ahead and put them in place versus, hey, now we need it, now it's coming, now it's too late. You know, I'm just, you know, just sitting here thinking, I'm sorry, I would have called the first time I was.
If I may, I can't do it. Yes, so, and that, and that makes, uh, good sense and makes good business planning, and that's what we're gonna, we, we want to do. But the suspension was put in place to try to help spur development so that we could get something going. And then, once we get some, some revitalization within the communities, then we can start attaching these fees as communities become infected. And that's why Mr. Bouchon has reached out and having the study done to see if it's feasible to put them in place at this time. And then we can plan for the future, but right now, the goal for the county was during the, during, at two thousand and eight, there was nothing going on. So it was a way to try to help spur some kind of development, probably commercial or residential.
Change the meaning.
And, and many communities did a similar kind of suspension of the collection of impact fees after the downturn. And different communities have, over time, uh, as development has come back, uh, to the area, has then, uh, rescinded the suspension of the collection of impact fees. Which is what this board will be considering probably in ninety to a hundred and twenty days, somewhere in that window of time, uh, this fiscal year. This is what we would anticipate occurring, so we can start collecting them. And they can be used in combination with other dollars, so you don't, that's the other thing, you don't have to wait until you've collected enough impact fees to build a project. You can collect impact fees and then use them in conjunction with other proceeds to complete a project within that five to seven year window of time, uh, when you have to use them.
Mr. Chair, let me ask real quick, um, when, when we suspended impact fees, what was the amount that it was at time, wasn't around six to eight thousand dollars?
It was a much smaller amount at that time, yes, sir. Uh, and every year, if I remember correctly, or at least for the last several years, Mr. Bouchon's has given a report about the, uh, impact fees that would have been collected, uh, for that fiscal year. Over time, it has added up to a pretty, uh, substantial amount of money, but as you also see, um, the time period that we've been suspending the impact fees has been back to, uh, two thousand and six or so, two thousand, excuse me. Um, when did we first suspend them, in two thousand eight, maybe? Um, um, so, since two thousand and eight, there had been a substantial number of dollars that would have been collected, or impact fees.
And, and right now, it would be, if my math is correct, probably around ten thousand dollars, give or take. With a hundred and eleven permits, it was a million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand cents.
Yeah, it's, you're trying to ask, like, what would be the impact if somebody was going to build a house, it's about ten, if, if all the impact fees were in places, about ten thousand dollars.
Yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not understand the question. So you're asking on a per unit basis, right?
Right, right, so if, if we pass them today, as an example, and somebody wanted to build a house in Port Vella, I'd say, they're going to add ten thousand dollars to the price of that house.
Well, so, and, so, the study will indicate the maximum.
Right.
That can be, that can be charged, uh, imposed as an impact fee, based upon the use and the impact, the actual impact on the county, uh, uh, infrastructure and services. So that's the maximum, you can come in at a lower number than that for your impact fee charges, but that's the maximum, I think, is around that ten thousand dollar per unit.
And if the developer comes in, let's say with a PDU, like the one going out of Lakeport or anything like that, even though it's a, a PDU, he would still be responsible for any impact fees on any building, except, okay?
Yes, sir.
And the amount for single family mobile home is ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public input?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the adoption of an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Glades County to extend the suspension of the collection of park impact fees for a time certain, providing for scrimmer's errors, providing for conflict, providing for liberal construction, providing for separability, providing ineffective data.
Motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Barnes, um, is there any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Myself is yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp is absent. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Passes four zero. All right, number three, extend the suspension of public education impact fees.
Chair Commissioners, the dates that, uh, you passed a ordinance to temporarily suspend the impact fees for public educational, impact fees are the same dates that you had done for the roads and the park. The only thing different is that the ordinance that was adopted for public impact fees is ordinance number two thousand six dash nine and then ordinance number two thousand eight dash thirty-four. Had impact fees been in place during the period from this, from January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, public education would have generated four hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Had all of your, uh, impact fees been in place for your four different categories, you would have collected one million, one hundred and sixty-four, seven hundred and six thousand and thirty-five cents. Did I say that right?
No.
Oh, I feel like it. And, uh, a motion has been provided to you for your consideration.
All right, and so even though this is a, the school impact fee that we would still have to be the ones that wrote it in and suspended it, but they would have to tell us to, they wanted it, right?
Yes, sir, and you'll have the study done, and then they will say, yes, we do want to, uh, impose the sus, the assessment, the impact fee or not. Uh, so yes, we, they'll, they'll have to give you some word on that.
All right, we have any public comment?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, just for one, uh, Commissioner Sapp just texted, he said had an issue this morning, but he's on his way.
Better hurry.
All right, um, any other, no more, no public comment, ready? All right, I will, I will add for motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the adoption of an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Glades County to extend the suspension of the collection of public educational impact fees for a time certain, providing for scrimmer's errors, providing for conflict, providing for liberal construction, providing for separability, and providing ineffective data.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Any discussion? Roll call vote, myself is yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp's absent. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Passes four zero. I move on to number four, extend the suspension of emergency medical services impact fees.
Chair Commissioners, again, Susan Bouchon's from the record, this is your fourth and final ordinance that have been coming before you for the suspension, the temporary suspension of impact fees, and that's for the emergency medical services. All of the dates that they had temporarily been suspended are the same as for your other categories, your roads, your parks, and your, the schools. The county ordinance adopted specifically for your emergency medical services was ordinance number two thousand six dash eleven and ordinance number two thousand eight dash thirty-two. Had impact fees been collected from January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the amount collected would have been thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. Had they been collectively collected for all of your impact fee ordinances, which are four of them, you would have had one million, one hundred and sixty-four, seven hundred and six thousand and thirty-three cents and thirty-five cents. I have provided for your consideration, uh, a motion.
Okay, um, just looking at your chart real quick, you got single family, mobile home, recreational vehicle, and warehouse stories, what about businesses?
I would have to look, but, uh, I believe that one went under, um. I'll have to research that for you.
But business, it wouldn't be in?
Uh, yeah, I need, I guess, sir, I need to look at that ordinance that you adopted in two thousand eight. I'll do that and we'll work out.
Okay, any public input? Any none? I'll take the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve adoption of an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Glades County, Florida, to extend the suspension of the collection of emergency medical services impact fees for a time certain, providing for scrimmer's errors, providing for conflict, providing for liberal construction, providing for separability, and providing ineffective data.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Mr. Barnes. Any discussion? Roll call vote, myself is yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp is absent. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to our consent agenda, which is number five, federal ethical sharing fund, these are permanent justice requests.
Uh, you're on consent agenda.
Oh, oh, sorry about that, sorry about that. I read wrong. That's back, we're on a consent agenda, which consists of number five, federal ethical sharing fund, the OJ request, number six, local law enforcement trust fund, number seven, county warrants.
That's it.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Commissioner Taylor. Any discussion? All favor? Oppose? Passes for a. All right, public input on business agenda items. Anyone wishing to provide public comment on agenda item, please fill out a comment card on table at the entrance to the commission chambers. Please note, all comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or divorce discretion. Now we're on our business agenda. Number eight, adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten for support of the FY twenty-six community project funding request for the expansion improvements of the Glaze County wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution is just a resolution of support for our application, trying to get some federal funding for the wastewater treatment plant. I know we're also looking for some local funds from, from our state legislators, but, um, this then actually also reached out to Franklin, Franklin and asked him to also look at this as well. So, and also he's gonna be looking at our feasibility study, but this one is for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, trying to get that third train in there, uh, and try to operate that super plant. We ask that you would, uh, move to adopt a order, a resolution number twenty-five dash ten in support of the wastewater treatment plant expansion request.
Uh, I'll just read the resolution, uh, the record, Glaze County Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash ten, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Glaze County, Florida, in support of the FY twenty-six community project funding request for the expansion improvements of the Glaze County wastewater treatment plant, providing for an effective deed.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten for support of the FY twenty-six community project funding request for the expansion and improvements of the Glaze County wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Barnes. I don't think there's a roll call on this.
I have a resolution.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes for a. All right, number nine, forty-nine eleven, region of, region six, next generation project, addendum number two to MOU.
Mr. Chairman, um, back in twenty twenty-two, you all adopted a resolution for a main, uh, memorandum of understanding, which included several counties. Since that time, the board, uh, with August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three meeting, approved, uh, amendment addendum number one, which included Martin County and St. Lucie County, and now requests have been made to include Manatee County and Sarasota County into that, uh, group. So we'd ask that you would consider approving that, uh, addendum two to this memorandum of understanding.
Okay, I guess I'll read the title and then addendum number two. To the Adnanpee County and Sarasota County as parties to the memorandum of understanding regarding a joint regional next generation nine-one-one routing project between Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners, Collier County Board of County Commissioners, DeSoto County Board of County Commissioners, Glaze County Board of County Commissioners, Hardy County Board of County Commissioners, Henry County Board of County Commissioners, Higgins County Board of County Commissioners, Lee County Board of County Commissioners, Martin County Board of County Commissioners, Monroe County Board of County Commissioners, Okachoba County Board of County Commissioners, and St. Lucie Board of County Commissioners. That's quite a bit of counties.
Partnership's a good thing.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the four to nine-one-one, region six, next generation nine-one-one project, addendum two, to include Manatee and Sarasota County in the original MOU that was approved September thirteenth, twenty twenty-eight.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Mr. Barnes. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Passes for a.
Number ten, criminal justice grant.
Mr. Chairman, this is a grant the Sheriff's Department added to the agenda. This evidently is a grant they've been, um, continually doing, and helps fund the board's debt. And I'll let the chief go into more details.
Dwayne Hall of Glaze County Sheriff's Office, we're requesting board approval to assign the grant. We've been operating this grant since nineteen ninety-seven. The base were four employees, forty tenants. Two, they're actually working for us here in the Sheriff's Office, and two, they're assigned to the DEA task force.
All right, glad to hear it.
Chief, I'm impressed you told me this helped you access the, uh, the criminal justice.
As long as, as long as this grant pays us one dollar, it allows us to use forfeiture money to use as a salary. So as long as we get one dollar, we can have a hundred, if I forfeit my life for it. So this is just the vehicle we use to deal with forfeiture money for salary.
And I suppose the motion would be to approve.
So it authorized you to sign the grant, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a document on page two of it, or, or page two of the document they provided. Uh, but it authorizes you to, on behalf of the county, to sign for the grant on page three of twenty-seven.
Mr. Chairman, normally when something like this is before the board, the board's motion is to approve, subject to the county manager and county attorney's review of the contents of the document of approval of that.
So. Motion by Commissioner Patterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taylor. Any discussion?
Uh, can I add an addendum on that to allow the chair to sign after?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine.
And you, good with your? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes for a. All right, um.
Thank you.
I gotta wait till they look up. All right, um, Constitutional Office, County. Sheriff's Department, anything else?
Sheriff's want me to let you guys know officially, public record, um, you sign a contract with ICE or inmates. We will start receiving ICE inmates April first. The board will, perhaps, probably issue right of November. That's what you have. Everything, everybody from the Old Hales, that's up in the Old Hales ward, that's the equipment, and a lot of everything over at the Sheriff's Office, so. We're geared up.
Very good.
Correct.
That's awesome.
All right, Chair, we can turn.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, we continue to work on a number of items. One item that came up for a public hearing, uh, before the planning and zoning board, since your last board meeting, was the Lakefront Estates, uh, development project. And the, uh, planning and zoning board approved a site plan, major site plan approval, uh, at a public hearing for phase one. Uh, that phase one is now, for Lakefront Estates is now, uh, actually got two subparts. So there's phase one, there's a subpart of that for phase one A, which is the model home center, and then there's another subpart which is phase one B. And, uh, so they are proceeding and, and, uh, moving ahead. So we, we continue to work on that project, uh, as well as the Big Lake project and other projects, and, um, County Road seven twenty-one's construction and, and, uh, things continue to move ahead, uh, well.
When does, is that before, I mean, that's not, not currently, but where are our roads? When is that before you start your page, you know?
So we've tried to have two separate meetings. I'm sorry, because it was a this item, so we've, we've had two scheduled kickoff meetings that got postponed because of this meeting conflict that came up, but so it's, it's imminent, it's seventy-four started. And, uh, during that kickoff meeting, I want to discuss some options to try and get more work done, like utilizing the contract, and I've let PFT know about that as well.
I know during the Citizens Traffic Advisory Committee or whatever, the DTESK or whatever, but there was questions raised on seventy-four by the deputies, like, when are we gonna start? And the only thing I had on our notes was that a kickoff meeting was scheduled, but I never did hear of it. It happened or not.
We had two different dates, and then I've gotten called away to different meetings that I wasn't able to attend those. Johnson Engineering is, is gonna be the CDI on that, and they're trying to schedule that, so we kicked that off at eight, yeah.
So that should be seven, pretty soon. And then, it's only gonna do a certain section, or it's not the whole week, right?
No, it's only two and a half miles of roadway, and it's all, all it's getting done with that, that funding. We put in for funding for the other two phases with scuff and scrap, but that takes years to get it, but we, uh, Archie's done a great job in getting them, those numbers up there. We're, we're hoping they'll hold up for a bit of time, so.
Glad to tell you, attorney.
Yes, sir. We digress.
Anything else?
I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Related to the county attorney's office.
I have one, Chair, uh, about the magistrate. When is that going to take effect?
That is a good question, and I'll have to get back to you to answer that. I didn't know that this took, you're doing, but I don't remember getting it, I, yes, I don't remember getting that back. Uh, I think we, the board did its step, and then, as with many items, it has to circulate around a bit.
Sure.
I have not seen it back yet. I'll look into it. Good question.
Anything else for county attorney? Uh, Chair, we manage.
I had a, uh, very good meeting with, with Emron from the tribe, a lot of productive talks. We talked about sewer, uh, for the Big Lake and some options there. They want to start partnering up with the county, even set up some meetings with myself and with Larry Howard with the tribe, and we're gonna talk about how we can partner up on some of these projects that we're, that affect both of us. We have the, um, contracts and everything are getting done, we're gonna start, we're hoping to start the seven twenty-one project after Easter. And we did an inspection, Archie and I, and Aime did an inspection of the section of seven twenty-one that they have completed. There's several punch out, punch list items that the contractor is gonna have to address. But all in all, I think it's a, it's a pretty good project that they did. And I've got a meeting tomorrow with Southwater Water Management, with the director, technical director of Southwater Water Management, to talk about several items, one of which I think is, something I think we all agree on is maybe, as we're doing this feasibility study, we have to put a sewer plant somewhere. I want to talk to them a little bit about if there's, uh, if there's some land that they can help us out with to put a sewer plant on, or reasonable sewer plant, and development seems to be coming up to that Buckhead Ridge, Lakeport area, and try to help, help solve those issues if we can. Not saying we're gonna put one in there, but let's open the door and figure out if, if availability to do that. All of that is running crazy. Oh, by the way, Commissioner, the PO, Archie's got the PO done for the cleaning of the courthouse and for the sand griff, and the POs are getting, so we got our closing, so this will be happening before the week.
That's great. Thank you.
Uh, the, the people living in the tent on South Street up there, I'm still getting bombarded with. Are we going to do a nuisance abatement or something like that?
I asked you, I asked you to take the nuisance abatement, and so with that one in, uh, there's another one on, on, uh, off of, uh, what's the name? Fernwood, those two, take those nuisance abatement. And then the gentleman's continually putting more stuff out there on twenty-seven, we're gonna do a, uh, a multiple, uh, complain on him for repeat offender, challenge of getting on a repeat offender, and finding is he hasn't been found guilty of the first one yet, so that, uh, noncompliance, so we'll have to look at that process, so. We're gonna get multiple, but he can still get multiple citations.
Hopefully, I mean, it, this has been going on for almost two years now, it's like, it keeps coming. Is the county gonna do anything or not? But it's, hopefully we can get something.
I'm the new guy.
I know, I know.
But it's just. I understand, and, uh, and unfortunately, that's, that's the challenges with code enforcement is the due process. And, you know, we've tried to get, um, the health department, certain things they gotta witness, but I think if we can get it to nuisance, then we can abate it, and if we get the order to abate it, of course, that's a cost to us, and then we'll have to lean the property, because I think it's an opportunity later to foreclose, we have to, then we can put it back on, on the tax bill later. It is a process, and it's not favorable one for most, because it does take time. But we, we are working on it, but that, that is not being left in shadows.
And the nuisance, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, um, the nuisance abatement process is a much more intense process in terms of the authority that the county has to impose not only penalties and fines like in normal code enforcement action, but actually to go out and, you know, remove the violation, clear the violation. And so, the, the evidence, the hearing process, as Mr. Carlon mentioned, the due process, the element, hearing element, uh, does, does need to be, uh, very thorough in order to withstand any appeals or, or later challenges. So it's, it's not just a normal code enforcement action, it's more intense than that.
All right, glad to have you here, Mr. Sapp.
I recognize his gear.
Something happened, he's just beyond my control, but. I, I was almost like myself, so. Um, anything else for the county manager? The one at the department, yeah, Archie, you got anything? No? Let's see. Bailey, you got anything?
Well, welcome, Chris Will, Mr. Carlon, who, uh, is assistant.
What's your name again?
Chris Will.
Glad to have you aboard. Mr. Fishon?
Yes, sir.
I think that's it, Mr. Puff, you, I didn't recognize you back there.
I'm the smaller version of who I used to be.
Good morning, Commissioner, some of you know me, some of you don't, Joe Pepe, Florida Department of Health. Uh, I am the interim administrator of Misswood, moved to another county recently, so I always ask to come back. And, uh, so I was here nine years, and now I'm back again, so I'm like relative, you can't get rid of. But, uh, anyway, it's good to see you all again, I just wanted to come by and say hi. I, I am gonna take note of the sanitary nuisance component and see what we can, kind of, work together on. From a health department perspective, we're in a good place, the position has already been posted and closed, so those candidates are being reviewed right now. Obviously, we'll be working with you all on filling that position, and I'll always be behind the scenes working on support, like I have been in the past, so you won't get rid of it. Um, budget-wise, we're doing well, we're filling our positions. Couple of things I'm looking at right now is any opportunity for clinical services expansion. I really would like to collaborate with the community a little bit more, see if we can get, um, some more services out there. One of the things I'm looking at right now is, is there a viability for a type-two diabetes-type program where we can look at reversing type-two diabetes in our community as one piece? Uh, we have gotten some agreements that we finalized now, uh, looking for a pool potentially in Glaze County where we can do swim lessons, um, and so we have a voucher program. Obviously, if we're coming into summertime, really want to prevent, gallop it any drownings, so that's another piece we're looking at. Always getting ready for hurricane season, working through those plans and better than sea management, so we're in a good place there as well, I think. So in general, we're in a good place, I just wanted to come by and say how, hi, just keep you all posted, and if you need anything, you know, reach me.
Glad to have you here back with us this evening. We were working with Missus Hood on the, um, I think I have a question for the Palmdale, I want to watch the heart, but I got the bid back in yesterday, but, um, we'll, I'll send that to you.
Okay. Yeah, the biggest challenge that we have through any of those things is the procurement process and all of that, so, uh, we've done some of that, uh, entry as well, but happy to work on, I'm aware of the program.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, good to see you.
I'm worried about that swimming pool, the bucket. I'm worried about that swimming pool, the bucket needs one. Got to remember. Did I tell all the department heads, I think I did. All right, we'll move on to our commissioner of items, um, Mr. Barnes.
I don't believe it, well, I, um, had, saw one comment on, worked on his Facebook page, somebody got a bid on a dog yesterday, I'm trying to get information on that. I'm asking for a quiet trip next week.
That, um, I was looking at last night, one of the classes is Thursday and Friday, it's got, um, the name of it, Albert, did, did you guys sign up for that class? Yes. So you won't be there for, uh, rural days, you'll be in class, I don't.
I believe that.
Thursdays from nine to six, and Fridays from eight, nine to three.
Nine to three, number two.
Yeah. It's tall timbers.
I thought I had two extra woodworks for a sugar cane, but I may not.
That's nice.
Is that what Becky, we'll give him cut out early?
Yeah.
Is it with Becky?
That's it.
We'll cut out. Do you have to go, there's anything to call off?
Yes, sir. Barnes? Our partners?
Uh, I just think if, if running up there, we might want to watch our speed for bringing machineries and knives, but, um, we had a great challenge here. Um, I don't know if anybody heard, the, the final number's still out there, uh, because add-ons are still coming in, but as I've noted, say, we're five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and, and a little bit over a hundred and, I believe, five kids. Um, the chapter four H hog brought ninety dollars a pound, and that helps that whole chapter with, with all their, everything from archery and mark and shooting to, you know, other clubs, sewing, everything, you know. S F A chapter hog brought ninety-six dollars a pound, which is exceptional, trying to help them get back on their feet. Uh, had a really, really great fish fry American Legion the other day. Um, and, uh, Ms. Bushans, I know you've been working on the twenty-seven corridor and it shows, if we're starting to clean up, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Tullum?
Yes, um, thank you to Archie and Mr. Carlisle. I'm anxious to see the courthouse all shined up. Sorry to say spitshined, that's probably. So I'm looking forward to that, but this is a nice building, and, uh, I don't know how long it's been around, but, um, it still looks good, and it's going to look better even cleaned up, so thanks for the, um, which one? Yeah. Um, also, I know I mentioned to Mr. Carlisle, we've been getting complaints about bulldogs over at the Haven Homes, and it's my understanding that there's an H O A there, so, I mean, I hate for anyone to have to get rid of their dogs, of course, uh, I have dogs myself, but, um, I believe, uh, you know, something may have been signed before the home was purchased with the H O A. Do you know if I'm, I'm correct, I'm just hearing that there's been.
I don't know, I know that, uh, when you, when you mentioned to me about it, I didn't know that Randy and Archie went out there, they, I don't believe they found the animals, but I think they went out there looking for them.
Okay.
So I know Randy's aware of it, so they're hearing more complaints about them wandering around, but I don't know about the H O A documents.
It was on Saturday, so I didn't call, I sent a text, but.
That was a puppy. Um, one of your relatives, he called in, that's what I was thinking of.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Some bulldogs. Anyway, um, so that's about all I have, except for I'll be going to legislative day and county rule days in Tallahassee next week, so look forward to that. And, um, our booth has been a hit for Glades County. Shame I won't get to be a part of the Talltimbers trip, that's a great trip, I'll move, um, on my first trip to Tallahassee. So, Mr. Carlisle, will you be going with us, maybe you can help chuck some sugar cane?
Hello? I'll be, I'm going to be there.
I thought so. So that's always a fun time, so we need to find something to top the sugar cane. Um, people come by, and, uh, a lot of them say that it brings back childhood memories to chew on the sugar cane. You have to tell some of them, though, how to do it, though, because they wanted to, you know, don't swallow it. Don't take a bite, just chew on it a little bit and get that sweet taste. But anyway, so I look forward to that, and, um, I believe that's it.
Mr. Sepp? Well, again, I apologize, I was missing a meeting. However, um, I do have a few things. I'm a little concerned about the, um, property taxes may be done away with. Our boss is doing a lot of cutting, and if he does that, we're in trouble. We are in deep trouble. So with that in mind, I, I believe we need to really get on this impact fee. Make us some, some more money in, I know we've discussed it, I don't know where we are with it, but I believe it's vital to us. And, um, another thing, we, whenever, before you three got on the board, the development up at Buckhead Ridge, whenever they brought their plans in and saw the maps, and I asked where the public safety building was in Mr. Marcos, must have to cut me off immediately. Well, I do believe that we should tell them we want a public safety building up there. Now, him, I understand you want to do the Buckhead Ridge Fire Department, I totally understand that, but they're going to put a lot of homes in there, and they're going to expect a lot from us. We should have a fire department there, a, uh, substation for the police department, and whatever else is necessary, I, I, I just, instead of us spending our money up there on, on that fire department, just a couple of miles away, they have everything there, and I, I believe that's very important. And I would like to talk to whoever we need to talk to about that, see if we can get something going. And then, the last thing. I think we really need to look at this single district voting, because it's going to have a big impact on us, never that place at full. And I think that's something we need to look at right now and start working on. And I'm still getting phone calls about our post office, and I've tried to tell everyone where we're at. Some people we can talk to, some you can't. And I tell them we're, it's been worked on from here to Washington to New York. So if you hear anything, one thing I would like, if you can get it for me, is whenever someone goes to build a building for the post office, they have guidelines for those specifications to go by. We can find out who somebody needs to contact. And also, I don't know if y'all know, but the owners of the Fondle building, I got ahold of them, and they were totally unaware that it had been closed. And they have not been able to get ahold of anyone to talk to about it. And they actually, I called the postmaster in LaBelle, asked her if I could get the key, we'll do a walkthrough with Mr. Carlisle, and she told me absolutely not, she couldn't do that. I passed that on to the owners, they called her and said, we would like to get the key to walk through the building, she said, I can't give it to you. They said, that is our building, we own it, and she said, I can't do that. So we're not getting anywhere there locally. So I appreciate everything that's being done, I know a lot of people have reached out to try to help us, and I keep telling everybody it just takes time, but like I said, I'm still getting phone calls about it, some are good, some are bad, that's part of it. But I, I think that, I think that's, I can't even think real good this morning, but I think that's all I have. All right, um, I don't have a whole lot, um, Lakeport has canceled their meeting tonight, so anybody was planning on going there, you know, I don't have to show up, um, Jeff, I don't know if you got copied on it, but there's a Pharaoh meeting today at one thirty. I'll end, but, um, the, what is it, um, I'm sure he, Terry Burrows.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I don't know, did we send them the letters saying what the meeting word is?
I don't know that we have, um, I used to attend all of those, um, I do need to get ahold of Terry and find out.
They've been doing a lot of them on Zoom lately, but, um, if there is one, I can forward it to you.
Yeah, I did not get a copy of it.
But, um, something else, I, I can, I think they're email addresses, too. I don't know. So I can forward some of this stuff to them, but other than that, um, I don't have much of it. I do know that term limits was supposed to have been discussed yesterday, the ethics committee, but they have to really close them, but so, I don't know what's going on there, but. Um, like I say, we are going to Tallahassee, and it sounds like we need to talk about a whole lot, especially, like I say, so the only way of property taxes, in a small county like Glades County, we can't live off of, um, sales tax, I don't know what tax we would, I mean, we would be totally dependent on the state at that time to give us money to support our community, and it would be up to the government, I guess, to say how much money we're going to get. But I don't, I can see in a bigger county where they have a lot of sales tax, they can raise the sales tax, but I know, um, they're trying to do a bill up there now to add an extra one cent sales tax for the small counties, so that, to help with infrastructure and, um, stuff, but another one cent for us, but just me and us giving money to Henry and, and October County, because we don't have any major stores here to collect that tax, so that, I couldn't, I can't support it, because it's, it's just going to be impacting our citizens for something that isn't going to help them, so. But we will be discussing that when we go up there with our legislature, pretty hard, so we'll see what their views are and what they're going to do, but. Other than that, anybody have got anything else they want to share before we?
You were talking about the, the property tax, I was reading the study the other day, and, uh, I believe the shortfall, if they did away with all the property taxes, the shortfall for the entire state is forty-three billion dollars. That the, that they're talking about, you know, the government would have to come up with, state government would have to come up with, keep counties running like they are, I, and, uh, one thing that had been, had been tossed about was, at one time, they had a intangible tax where it was on any investments you had and everything else. They're saying even if they put an intangible tax back on with everyone's investments and all that, you could track that, you're still not even half of that forty-three billion dollars the state would require. So they're, the state's not even sure how they would, how they would come up with that at this point. It's, it's kind of scary that they're thinking about without even knowing what's going on, so.
Any other business or comments?
I just wanted to invite you guys to, we bond all, ten sixty, County Road seven thirty-one, whatever we use. We have our potluck at News Community Association on Thursday night at six thirty, you guys are invited to come out, have a potluck dinner. And then the, um, hunting festival again is coming around the corner, we're trying to figure out what annual year this is, because nobody was really keeping up with that in the beginning. We want to say it's about twenty years, this will be our twentieth annual, and that is scheduled for April fifth, and it's from ten to three, so. So we're still very concerned about this.
I'll grab your shirt.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Anything else?
Please, Mr. Chair, I just want to say that, uh, Chalnica Week, I believe this is a success, Jeff gave you some numbers, the Glades County Youth Livestock, uh, they're a blessing to our county, and I know that, um, on the show week, there was a presentation out in Buckhead Ridge, and I got some notes and letters of disapproval that I wasn't able to attend, but Chalnica and the Glades Youth Livestock Shows are in Glades County, it's a big part of Glades County. I was supporting my, uh, grandchildren, showing their animals, and this is in my district, I was disappointed to have missed the presentation at Buckhead Ridge, but I was happy to support my district and my county. And, uh, hopefully next year, we can get the word out to all of our Glades County residents to, to participate in the Chalnica and the Glades Youth Livestock City, so. It was a great week, and, uh, all the, uh, the children did well, and it's a good thing going for Glades County. The, uh, the four H, Glades Youth Livestock, and F F A, and Chalnica. I do hope we can, uh, those rides, they're good, my grandkids have fun, but looking forward to a little bit of improvement on that sometime there. If that's possible, I, I, and I appreciate the, uh, the Chalnica board, but I look forward to just growing and getting better.
One last call before we close. All right, seeing our business is done, we are adjourned at ten.